All right, you good? All right. Well, good evening, everybody. And first of all, I have to call this to order because it is a regular meeting of the council because we have a quorum here. So I show 6:35 and we are called to order for the members of council that are here. Yeah, most of you know that I don't like wearing microphones, but because we are recording this, like any other council meeting, if I don't wear it, it doesn't go on to the video and the recording. And that, well, at any rate, the attorneys have said you need to do that. So, that said, we have not done this before. And to give credit where credit's due, this is the, an idea that came from Mr. Edwards, from the city council, who said that he thought it would be a great idea for the city council and the presidents of the various homeowners associations from around the city to get together and have a dialogue at a minimum once a year, maybe more often than that. But this is sort of an inaugural one, and our purpose is to first provide a little bit of information about what's going on in the city directly to you, field questions and concerns directly from you. And because you are closest to the residents in your neighborhoods, your friends, your neighbors, I think it's a great way for us to have a bit of a wider dialogue in both directions than we have simply by meeting in council chambers or even with the council meetings that we have on the go in the various places around the city. So, that said, we have an agenda. What this is? Mr. Edwards. So, he's not going to be able to be here, so I'd like to read this on his behalf at his request. "Greetings, I really wanted to be in attendance for this meeting since it was my idea." Okay, we got that. "However, my employer had other plans for advanced training initiatives." I understand, he's a business owner and when they say jump, you gotta go. "I pray this meeting will give you as HOA presidents an open forum to tell us as civic leaders where you've seen particularly troubling areas in our community, and it also gives you a chance to disseminate information back to your residents. We are engaged and we're listening. If we have things we've done well, please feel free to let us know. I've always said that you are citizens of the eyes, ears, and truly the heartbeat of the community. You need to know your council members are open and receptive to your feedback and any dialogue provided. Again, tonight's meeting is a great start to many more conversations to keep our community safe, attractive, engaged, and sustainable. In his service, Councilman Cedric Edwards, Sr. Go Army Beat Navy." But he has a daughter at the Naval Academy. You have to be careful with that. And of course, he hasn't reached out to me yet to tell me how Navy beat my Memphis Tigers in their opener, but I know it's coming. So the first thing that we'll do is we'll let the council members that are here say hello very quickly, introduce themselves in case there's anyone that doesn't know them. And then we will go and have some presentations from the police department on community crime mapping, the police department regarding code enforcement, major projects update from Public Works and engineering, public affairs about the e-newsletter, social media, Shirts magazine, and the city website, and then planning and community development, what's developing in Shirts, interactive map. They want questions and comments, and essentially what we'll do is we'll treat it a bit like a town hall type of situation. I'll do my best to moderate, give everybody a chance to ask questions, make comments, et cetera, and give the council members opportunities to respond during that as well. So, why don't we begin first Mayor Protam Skagliola, and we'll just go right here, one, two, three, and four. Yeah, let's do that, and you can pass it along. Oh, man, I don't have my reading glasses on. There we go.
Hi, Mayor Protam Skagliola. Okay, at one time, I was a HOA president. Recovering from the experience. You ever hear the expression, "No good deed ever goes unpunished"? Welcome to the world of HOA presidency. So, I feel for you, I really do. Yeah, the bottom line of leadership is, kind of simple, leaders take care of their people. Well, who are my people? Well, you holler my people. Every resident of this city is my people. The only problem is, I can't be everywhere at once. So I make a special concerted effort to take care of the people who are out there taking care of my people. Starts with the city council, being a member of the city council. And yet, it goes beyond that. It goes to our city staff. We couldn't do half the stuff we want to do without their cooperation, without their expertise. Has to do with people like you, who are out there in the individual communities, taking care of our people. And we do our best to trickle down the information. We have a lot of resources out there, and we can let you know what's going on. Sometimes, all you have to do is ask. You know, 3-1-1. Dial up, you talk to some wonderful people who can lead you in the right direction. But it's also important sometimes to get words, get information from the bottom up. We can get it onesies and twosies sometimes from the residents. Yeah, sometimes my phone rings off the hook a couple of times a day. Not too often. Mostly, though, we get it from communities, community leaders, like the HOAs. So, from a former president of an HOA to a council member. I'm very appreciative that you're out there, working for us, taking care of our people. That's about all I have.
Thank you. I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about the city council. My name's Mark Davis, I'm a city council member, place one. Just, I'd like to say thank you for all showing up tonight. There's a lot of discussions that we have every Tuesday night when we have city council, and one of the things that is really hard for us is getting good feedback and good input from the community. So it's very, very heartening to see everyone here tonight. We want to hear what's going on in your communities, what's going on in each of your housing areas, and tell us what we're doing right, and more importantly, tell us what we're doing wrong. Tell us where the city of Shirts needs to be going. Thanks again for coming out.
Good evening, I'm Ralph Gutierrez, city council, place two. Thanks for coming out here. As you know, we represent the city as council members, and you also represent a small portion of that city. So I appreciate that you came out here, you know, voiced your concerns, your issues. We all have different things that come up, different challenges, and getting some input from you will help us determine what is the best course of action. And thanks again for coming out here.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bert Crawford, place seven. I've been on council for the last two years. I was an HOA president for four years, I'm still on our HOA board. Earl Baluas here is our president tonight, thank goodness, and not I. And I'll stick with it for a while longer. Everybody before me said everything that I feel also. I know Brenda Davis, our city secretary, put in a bunch of work to get every email address and phone number, whatever, to get you folks to come. I think if I count, it could be 24 people sitting at that table or these tables. That's great. We need your feedback, anything you can do to come to council, come to meetings, get on committees like Patty is and some other folks, do it. It helps us know what's going on, and I certainly appreciate it, and the rest of the council does too. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, council. So at this time, I'll turn this over to our police department, and we'll start with the presentations we have from staff.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sure most of you here are familiar with who I am. I'm Officer Helen Leppe. I'm the special projects officer for the City of Shirts Police Department. A lot of you, I communicate via email and over the phone, so it's nice to put some faces to some names I haven't seen in a while, and some I haven't seen before. So again, I'll give you some information at the end, but I'm going to be your point of contact for any type of special projects, crime stats. One thing I want to reiterate, we've got National Night Out. I think the majority of your neighborhoods have registered. If you haven't, get with me at the end of the meeting, and I'll get you on the list. If you're not familiar with that, we break out in teams. Each team has a council member, some city staff, law enforcement personnel, and each team has some neighborhoods, and they go visit throughout the night between 6:00 and 8:00. It's Tuesday, October 2nd. So it's kind of a good evening to take back the neighborhoods from crime. So, the last couple of years, I've incorporated fire and EMS so they can go out and visit as well, because a lot of the neighborhoods really like when the fire trucks show up. So I can't promise anything, but I do send them the list, so. With that being said, let me get started. All right. So first of all, I'd like to make sure we give a round of applause to our IT department, because otherwise, this would have been death by PowerPoint if I didn't have internet access. So, thank you so much for that. Maybe, where'd it go? What on earth? What did that do? Okay. Okay. They said the click worked. Let's do this, sorry. Should have practiced beforehand. Okay, so if anybody's gone on the website and done any digging lately, we have recently partnered with a company called Lexus Nexus, and it gives our area residents the opportunity to be more informed about reported criminal activity in their neighborhood and their city as a whole. Okay? Is it working? Okay. It wasn't turned on, okay. The crime map is updated nightly with new data from the police department's record system. And the community crime map shows crime in and around the Shirts area, and it allows visitors to sign up to receive crime alerts and neighborhood watch email reports of reported incidents in their neighborhood from the Shirts Police Department. And then you can also choose to receive the emails daily, weekly, or monthly, and then you have the options for a specific distance and time to receive the emails. So this is just kind of a screenshot, it's not the best, but I myself went in there just to give myself an idea of what it's going to look like. This is what it'll look like. I selected to be within five miles of the police department, any reported activity. And then, it shows that it was updated yesterday, but it occurred in the last two days. So, and you can sign up to receive those daily, just make sure you check your spam folder after you sign up for it, because that's where mine went the first day I got it. One thing I do want to stress is this map only shows incidents where a report is generated and forwarded to an investigator, okay? It's not going to show incidents when only a call for service, or as we call it, a CFS is issued, or a warrant arrest is conducted, okay? A CFS is when an officer makes a location and the reporting party doesn't need or want a report, or the reporting party has chosen to remain anonymous. A perfect example of this is a traffic stop. We make, you know, a lot of traffic stops during the day. There's a number assigned to that traffic stop, but a report is not generated, so it's not going to show up on this crime map, okay? Another few examples of a CFS is a minor accidents where no report is generated, a lot of those are on private property, or if the damage does not meet the requirements for a report, city code violation where possibly a solicitor does not have a permit, or like I said, a traffic stop. Okay? So, how do I get to it, and once there, how do I use it? So, how they got me all set up with this PowerPoint? All right. So, there it goes. So this is going to be the basic front page of the website when you go to www, or I guess just shirts.com. It's under services, police, and then, under police statistics, community crime map. This is what your screen's going to look like, and then, just click on the link, and it's gonna do some legal jargon. Usually, I just hit continue. If you want to read that, go right on ahead. All right. So, this is showing the bull's eye of the police department. Right now, it's showing half a mile radius, which I think is off from there, but one thing I want to show you is on the events. This is going to show you any type of classification for the type of events that can show up on here. Right now, they're not all checkmarked. So if you decide you want to see absolutely everything that can be reported, you would select all, and it changes your screen, okay? So if we click on these, of course, it would do that. All right, we're going to click on this one down here. There we go. All right, so that one was criminal trespass, and it does redact some of the address information. So it's 4XX Main Street, and it's not going to give you any information on the event itself. Okay? So that's our basic crime mapping system. If you want to go in, it's got a lot of other information in here. It breaks it down on a list. You can do, it's not going to show offenders, but we do have a section on here for the sex offenders. It's got analytics with these fancy graphs and all sorts of neat stuff there, if you're into that kind of thing. And then, metadata. But one thing I thought was really kind of cool, let me see if I can do it. Oh, I guess I can do it down here. Some of the other agencies around us also use this system. So if you have a family member that lives, you know, over here in Converse, Live Oak, Windcrest area, you can actually see some of the stuff going on in there as well. So, that's kind of neat. And then, and then here's your crime alerts to sign up. And then it'll ask you, you know, how far away, remember it's going to be from the police department? And then, do you want it daily, weekly, monthly? You can select what time you want to receive it. So if you're a night owl and you want to get it at 2:00 in the morning, it'll send it to you at 2:00 in the morning. If there's only specific offenses that you want to receive, then you would click on those and then sign up. Again, just make sure you check your spam, because I know that happened to me, and I had four or five of them in there before I went over there and checked it, so. Any questions on any of that? Nothing? It updates nightly, so it's not going to be, so if they're out there right now taking a report, you're not going to see it till tomorrow. I saw a hand go up in that general area back there. Yes, sir?
Can you do it per subdivision, or is it just a couple of miles back from the subdivision?
Not yet. This is kind of a work in progress for us. There's a way, at some point, we'll be able to go in there and you can kind of circle a general area, we just haven't gotten there yet. So, any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much for that. I'm going to stay up here, because I'm going to do the next presentation. So, if Mr. Waite can come up here and join me?
Yes, ma'am.
You can take one of those and pass it down for me. I don't have it if I did it. Go back to the home page. Do you want the microphone, and I'll chime in? I could be your lovely assistant. Yeah, well, I'll leave it here for now, and then we'll show how.
Howdy, everybody. My name's Dudley Waite, Executive Director over Operations, and one of the departments that reports up through me is the police department. And code enforcement, last December was reorganized, we rolled the marshals department into the police department, and so that's where code enforcement lives. And it's made some great changes in our code enforcement department. It's made them a little bit more flexible, it's also got rid of some inefficiencies that we had with two separate law enforcement agencies, and things are going really well there. Corporal Spradling is the officer in charge of the code, oversees the code enforcement department, and he had a family issue arise, and so he had to leave late this afternoon, so we told him we'd cover for him. And really, what we really want to do on code enforcement tonight is for you to take a look at that pamphlet that's being handed around the table. It's been updated, and it also exists out on the webpage, and it explains a lot of what code enforcement does, and a little bit about what code enforcement doesn't do. Our code enforcement department is, exists to enforce city ordinances, and a lot of times, we're asked, well, hey, we've got this issue with our HOA covenants. Code enforcement doesn't exist to do private HOA covenants, but we do work, and we try to work tirelessly on the city ordinances, and you'll see many of those examples of what those things are. This information is available on the website, and I'll let Helen guide us there.
So this is going to be some of the basic information in regards to code enforcement. And again, the flyer that went around is available on the website, and we can update that as needed. Here's a list of some of the more common code violations, not necessarily included in that flyer, but if you need a copy of it, it's right there on the, like I said, it's on the website. So if you need to send a digital copy, you can copy the link, or you can download the flyer to your computer and send it out, maybe, kind of as a general reminder to some people. I know right now, with all the rain we've had, the big push is going to be the stagnant water and the mosquitoes. They're carrying off small cats right now, so we probably want to go ahead and make sure our water, we don't have standing water on the property. So, and then, there's also the ability to report violations online, but again, there's also 3-1-1. Oh, apparently not, we need to update that, I guess, Mr. Waite. We will get that fixed tomorrow. So 3-1-1's going to be your go-to, and also on the back of that flyer, the phone number to the marshal, or to the environmental health is on there. 1650 is going to be the last four, I believe, right? Okay, thank you. And so they, you can contact them directly. Yes, sir?
I have a question, and you were talking about, especially with all this rain and stuff like that, not because of this rain, but in the past, when we got some rain, which doesn't happen often, our covenants guy had noticed that there was some neighbors that in their backyard had standing black water, and when they called the marshal, they were told by the marshal, "We're not allowed to leave the backyard." He's going, "Wait a minute, this is something that could be, you know, breeding ground from mosquitoes and stuff. Well, I'm sorry, we can't look into the backyard." How do we take care of that?
So, there's a number of ways. So, our code enforcement, they do enforce laws, and so the constitution is very important. They can't go on private property without being invited. They do oftentimes have the opportunity to see into private property when a neighbor complains about something. So how did the neighbor see the black water? Did the neighbor go into the backyard, or were they standing on their porch in their backyard and could see it? And if they willingly and voluntarily invite the code enforcement officer in to stand on their back porch, then they can have, they can see it, have probable cause, go get a warrant, and go in there and work to get it abated. Or second floor, or wherever else. So, that's how we work around that. We can't just go up and peer through the cracks in the wood privacy fence, we can't go in their backyard and look. That's the same as coming in your house, when Helen would come in your house without a search warrant. It's not legal for us to do that. But if there, if a citizen called in a complaint and will identify themselves, which is sometimes an issue, they don't want to identify their neighbor as having a problem because they have to live next door to them. But if they'll call in and identify themselves and say, "You can come into my second floor bedroom and see the problem I'm talking about," the code enforcement officers will take them up on that, and then they have probable cause then to be able to go address that. If somebody sees it, they're not willing to identify themselves, or they're not willing to allow them onto their property to see the problem, and it's behind that six-foot privacy fence, then our hands are really tied until it becomes a larger issue, or somebody says, "Hey, you can come in here and take a look at it." And that's important, we talk, we call our code enforcement folks code enforcement. They also, you will hear them identify themselves as environmental health, and they do vector control, so as mosquito-borne illnesses, if they start being reported in the area, then they also work to get out and spray for mosquitoes in some of the high-risk areas. They work with Public Works to put mosquito repellent, not mosquito repellent, but mosquito bait into some of standing water in some of our drainage ways and things like that as well. And so they do work on the mosquitoes, they work on other things such as spills, minor spills and things like that on private property. And then they also have the sanitary services within their department as well, which is the kitchen and restaurant inspections that have to be done around the community. Yes, sir?
What's the average turnaround time for a complaint? Or is there a standard? When we call in a complaint, how soon should we hear the response?
So, I would say standard turnaround time, depending on the complaint and the priority of it, is probably in order from 24 to 72 hours before the code enforcement officer will get out there to evaluate it. The issue then becomes, how quick will you see that get abated, or how quick will you hear something back? If you ask for them to contact you back, they will, when they go out there and evaluate the issue. But one of the things we strive to do, our police department and our code enforcement department under them strive to do, is to get compliance over enforcement. And so what we're going to do is if somebody has tall weeds and grass in their yard, and it's 12 inches tall, is we're going to go out there, we're going to make contact with the resident, we're going to advise them of what the ordinance is, and then we're going to give them an opportunity to mow the lawn, right? So we get there, and they say, "Yeah, I was out of town throughout the tropical depression that came through. I haven't been here in a week and a half, I just got home, but I can't get off work until the weekend to mow my lawn." And code enforcement will come back Monday. And then if it's not done on Monday, then they'll step up that ability to try to get compliance. And so weeds and grass are an easy one, because those usually get taken care of with a weekend to mow. Some of the bigger problems, trash on property, things stacked up in the right-of-way, things like that, sometimes take a little bit longer, especially if there's going to be a cost to getting some of that done. But our goal is to get everybody to comply, to understand and comply with what the ordinances say, as opposed to just rushing out and writing them tickets. We get to the ticket stage if they're not cooperative. And what I would encourage you to encourage your residents to do is if, is if they feel that frustration, is to call code enforcement and ask about the complaint that they made. And the officers will call them back if they're not in the office, and likely, they're not because they're out pretty much 8 to 5 every day. But they'll call, they'll call your resident back, and they'll explain where it is in the process.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
We are having an issue with high weeds and trash through the city's maintenance in that, so can we call code enforcement to let the city get that removed?
Absolutely. Or you can call myself, or you can call the Drainage Department at Public Works. There's three folks you can call for the city areas. Yeah, but sometimes we get behind in that. Either it's because of staffing or equipment issues. We do try to get around, in the summertime, when the grass is growing faster, the weeds are growing, we get around a little more regularly. We will get behind when we have episodes like two or three weeks of rain, and because usually what those things are the city has to mow are drainage ways. Just because it stopped raining on Monday doesn't mean we can put a tractor in there today to try to mow it. And so sometimes it takes us a little longer to let that dry, because we're going to go in there with a tractor as opposed to a walk-behind mower. And so the ground's got to be a little drier, so we don't tear up the turf and make that an eyesore for the neighborhood as well, so. But please, if you see that, call us. Because a lot of times, we have a schedule, but some areas will get more rain, or maybe we miss something because of a broken piece of equipment, didn't get it finished, and now it's growing faster and ahead of other areas. So if you see something belongs to the city, don't let us off the hook, call us about it. Call code enforcement, you can call the city manager's officer, you can call Drainage at Public Works, because that's who, and Doug's here tonight, there he is over there. He's who, he's who runs the Drainage Department over there, and he'd be happy to take your call and get the guys out there, so. Yes, sir? We'll get back. Okay.
I will attest to the fact that you're close to doing a really good job, because we've used your services many times, it's not my part. There's one thorn in our side that we just can't get past, has been called into the city multiple occasions, and it has to do with property that is owned by corporations that is in front of our neighborhood, that's 10 to 12 foot tall, that becomes a haven for rats, snakes, refrigerators, mattresses, whatever you want to say. And the city has tried, I mean, the last time that I really charged on this for about a year timeframe, the city eventually came out and mowed 75 feet from our fence line to help us out a little bit. But what can be done about making these people that own this land take care of it?
So, and when you get into land like that, so that's where the illegal dumping was going on, right up against that freeway too, right?
Well, that was one portion of it. The other portion is just constant 10 and 12-foot weeds and mosquito trees that are growing out there that nobody takes care of.
So what we need to do is go out there, see who currently owns that, who's currently, because that land also, I know the land against the interstate changed hands on several occasions when we were trying to get that illegal dumping cleaned up. We did eventually get that cleaned up, and hopefully, put up enough fencing to prevent others from dumping in there. I'm not guaranteeing that, because where there's a will, there's a way, but, and that's what we need to do for that property that's back behind that that gets closer to your houses. And see if we can identify who that property owner currently is and get them out there to abate that. If we make enough effort and they won't come out and abate that, then we go to abating it ourselves, which is probably what happened last time, and we'll hire a company to come out there and mow that, and then the landowner has to pay the city back for that. We put a lien on that property if they ever try to sell it again.
And I tell you, I think we're hurting ourselves too, and I wanted to ask you this question, if we are hurting ourselves. When the neighborhood was built, because we want our neighborhood to stay nice, we put, or the neighborhood, the builder put irrigation there, put up some nice trees, and we keep, we pay to water, we pay to manicure the street, you know, 50-foot either side of the street. So that portion of it, we're paying for, we're doing, for the past 12 years. But we're getting to the point where we're going to cut the line on the water, we're going to let the trees die, and we're not going to mow the grass anymore, and it's going to become extremely bad. I mean, it's already bad.
Yeah.
But because we're doing that, I think that when y'all come out, y'all say, "Well, you know, it's 50-foot on either side of the road, what's the problem?" You know, it looks good.
Well, the lot, and as it comes up to the back of the residences, it needs to be properly maintained, you know, just because it's open land doesn't necessarily mean that it doesn't have to be maintained to a standard, so.
Yeah, there's a large lot to be sowed. I'll open up another case.
Okay, and I'll let code enforcement know they're going to see that, so they can start chasing it.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir, back there.
Yes, as far as, two things I've got. One, as far as permits, I have a resident who told me that they just installed her water here, received the permit, posted it in their window, no problem. She called the city three times, and just still had them come out and inspected it. I mean, it's electric water here, she's not too worried about it. I mean, it's electric water here, she's not too worried about it. And the other two items that I have is bandit signs, as far as along Shirts Parkway, every Saturday. I know a lot of real estate agents think they can do whatever they want. We own the property, we maintain it, and it says you're not supposed to have it on Shirts Parkway as it is. Typically, it's real estate agents, roofers, variety of different other ones. And also, we have people that come into our neighborhood and put door hangers on the doors. So what do you recommend to do for both of those?
So, the permit issue, I'll let you speak to Lisa here in a little bit, because that comes underneath Development Services. For the bandit signs, I will tell you, that's really one of the places that I think we've seen our greatest efficiency. So there are, so there are folks who come out, they're going to do an open house, and for an open house on one street, you'll see about twenty-five signs leading you to that open house. And most of those are put up illegally in the right-of-way, and they need to be taken and, and taken down. Code enforcement does do that. They, they are out on Saturdays, they are out on Sundays. We don't, we don't go out every Saturday and Sunday, but we are out on a variety of Saturday and Sundays. The bigger bandit sign issue we were seeing for the longest time was actually up along I-35 between 3,009 and Shirts Parkway, both northbound and southbound, and really all the way to, to Wiederstein, that exit up there. And one of the things that, that we learned through our process of getting out there and removing these bandit signs is that a lot of these companies that put those signs up, put them up in the dead of night. Well, prior to combining code enforcement with the police department, the police department didn't realize that, that that was what was happening. Now, in the, in the overnight shifts with our police department, they're actually watching for these sign crews to come out and place those signs, and if they, and if they catch them doing it, they're writing them tickets for putting those signs up illegally in the right-of-way, which has helped abate that. Also learned a number of other things about those bandit signs, like the ones that look like they're hand-drawn with magic marker are actually printed to look that way, because they know that attracts a certain customer that they're trying to market to. And so just because it looks like it's been written with a magic marker doesn't mean that it has been, and it's probably been put up in the middle of the night. I'll, I'll talk to code enforcement about Shirts Parkway and make sure that we're hitting that. A lot of times, they're out till eleven or twelve, and then they're, somebody comes in with an open house at two o'clock, they don't start putting those signs out till one. And so, you know, no matter what pattern we do, the people who are throwing the signs up in the right-of-way learn that pattern, and so they adjust their schedule accordingly. But we'll work on shifting that a little bit later and looking for some of those, especially on Shirts Parkway.
So if we see a sign, do we just report it to you, like a roofer or a real estate agent? I mean, let you know that, hey, this was on Shirts Parkway?
Yeah, you can, you can dial three-one-one for that, that would be, that would be great. And you could, that's true, you could take a picture and send it as well through the website. And that allows us to notify the company as well.
So are they increasing the fines?
Who what?
Increasing the fines on these, these companies that do that?
So they do get increased if they have multiple violations, and then if, if we go after them and write them tickets. So some of them are educational issues. We actually have some folks come in. Honestly, they come in, we've taken their signs, they've spent a lot of money on those signs, they come in to reclaim their property, and we have those conversations about where they can and cannot put those signs up. And, and in a lot of those cases, it's an educational thing, and we never see those companies or those individuals back again. Others make choices, I think, to do that, so. And then your last one was the door hangers. That's underneath our solicitation and, and peddling ordinance, which we're, police department's currently updating. If somebody's coming in your neighborhood, and it's private, I mean, it's open public city streets, and they're not, but they're not trying to make contact with you, but just want to hang something on your doorknob, there is this thing called the freedom of speech in this country, and those door knockers have been held up as a freedom of speech. So if they try to, if their, if their intent is to make contact with people that they're placing those on, then that's a different matter. They're now peddling or soliciting, and that has to have a permit. But to hang a door knocker, to do something on political speech or religious speech, the city is not allowed to infringe upon that. Oh, in a gated community? That's awesome. In a gated community, those aren't, that's not private, right? So they're technically trespassing, right?
They are.
So that's when you call us?
So, that's when you would call six-one-nine-twelve-hundred, which is the police department on emergency line, and let them know that they're trespassing, and the police department will take care of that if you see them in there hanging them.
What about the people that are coming in, and they say they've got a permit to solicitate, and all of our neighbors have got no solicitation signs all over their front door, and they say, and we tell them, "You are not allowed to see this sign, do you read that?" They decide, "Oh, we have a permit, we can come, we can ring your doorbell any time."
Close, close the door and dial six-one-nine-twelve-hundred. If they're aggressive in any way, dial nine-one-one, and Shirts Police Department will come take care of that. Yes, sir. In the back.
I don't know if this is the proper time or not, but I have to go pick children up from volleyball practice shortly, so I want to, I want to be sure I get this told. I have got to give a wonderful compliment to Doug Ledbetter. My house, I built it in two thousand and eleven, and because of the flooding problem over there, it has flooded six times. Doug has brought sandbags over, and the city comes and puts my sandbags out when it's going to storm, and comes back and takes them up when it's not going, when it's already passed. And I've got to compliment him. But I would also like to know if anybody knows what the, we had done a pledge for the council to put on their budget to fix that drainage ditch down there, and I haven't heard a word from anybody. And since it affects my house so much, I'd kind of like to know what position of that is.
When's that construction starting?
Uh, yes, ma'am. The contractor we picked, we, we already went out and had three bids done. And we picked a contractor currently, he, he won't be back until next week, so it'll be, within the next two weeks, he should be on it.
Thank you, Doug.
And there was one more here in the middle of the table. Yes, ma'am.
I have a problem with dumping. So I've confronted people dumping before, but then y'all can't get there in the time between I confront them and you getting there, they leave. So if I took a picture of them, how would I go about getting someone that's dumping on my property?
Usually what I tell people in situations like that, be a good witness, don't go up and tell them that we're coming, so we can have the element of surprise. So if you can safely, you know, snap a picture, try to get a good license plate, get a good description of the vehicle, any damage, any unusual markings, and then call us. A lot of times, when you tell them, "You're not supposed to be dumping here, I'm calling the police," well, I'm out of here, you know? So, yeah, get as much information as you can, call us, and like I said, don't confront them. Number one, it's not safe sometimes, because we don't know people today anymore, we hear horrible stories. And number two, like I said, it can give us the element of surprise, you know, if they don't know you're there, you know, telling us that they are there, and it gives us the opportunity to get there before they leave. And then real quick, before we close out, for those of you that don't have my information, I'm going to give you that real quick. I see everybody's taking lovely notes, so you can jot this down if you don't already have it. Two-one-zero-six-one-nine-one-two-six-four, that's my direct line in my office. And then my email is H, the letter H is in Helen, and then it's my last name, L-A-F is in Frank, I-T-T-E, and that's at shirts.com. So if you ever, if you have any questions, if you leave here tonight and you go, "Man, I forgot to ask that," shoot me an email. Even if it doesn't pertain to me or what I discussed, I can get you off to the right department. Okay? And then I'm going to let Mr. Dudley.
Public Works Engineering on major project update. This is Kathy Woodley, our city engineer. Need me to pass those out?
That'd be great. Thanks. Hi, everyone. I'm really excited to see how many folks turned out tonight. May not have quite enough of these to go around, but I'll show you where you can find it. It's really, I'm just providing it as a, as an example. So, engineering works real closely with Public Works. We also work with community development, planning, and building inspections. But tonight, we're going to talk about where you can find updates on projects. And I really like the, the comment about the drainage project on Cameron River, because I'll show you where you would be able to find an update about that. Also, let you know this again, as I think one of, at least one of Helen's things, she described as a work in progress, and this is, is again, a work in progress. This isn't just engineering, what we're looking at, the major project updates. You'll see on here, we've got projects that Parks and Rec are doing, we've got drainage projects that are being taken care of by the Public Works Department. We also have facilities projects, so you'll be able to see some updates about significant facilities projects. Not, not replacing HVAC units in, in a smaller building, but Fire Station Number Three, Construction, Rec Center, YMCA restrooms, roof repairs, that seems kind of minor, but we have some pretty significant roof repair issues going on around the city, and some other facilities projects. And we also have our engineering projects, which in some cases are joint together with Public Works or with, with Parks and Rec. So one of the projects under drainage is the Cameron River Drainage Box. What, what I printed out here is actually the update from September. We put these together monthly, and they are put in the council packet for the first council meeting of every month. So in some cases, it doesn't really have a good background on the project, but it, it gives an update. So if you follow along, and council always does, they're aware of a project that's going on, they'll be able to see the update on it. So if you see something on here and you want to know some more background, you can contact us. So I can show you where generally to find these. If you go under Government. Oops, sorry about that. Agendas and minutes, and you're probably already familiar with this, City Council agendas, and when you go in there, you have several options. You can get an agenda only for a meeting, or you can get agenda with backup. You're going to be amazed, if you haven't looked at these before, at what you see. I'm going to go down. Go to the, the actual agenda that this update was put together for, which was a new chapter. And every council member has to review every page of every one of these every week. Brenda Dennis has to put these together every week, and we'll see how big this one was. One hundred and ninety pages, this is a really small one. There's hardly anything going on that week. But, let's see. And I apologize for my lack of... Yeah, well, I'm getting there. Okay, so on the agenda, toward the end, there will sometimes be information available in council packets, no discussion to occur. So there won't necessarily, there won't be a discussion about these items at the council meeting, but the first meeting of the month, you'll see a monthly update on large projects. And then the fact that this has backup with the agenda, when you go down to page one hundred or wherever toward the, toward the end, you will find... Well, maybe you'll just have to trust me that it's in here. I don't know if it's at the bottom. In any case, I don't know about you, but I can, I have trouble operating these, these touchpads instead of having a mouse in front of me. So in any case, every item on the agenda has its backup information in here. And so you'll find this several-page memo that gives an update on the projects. I did put at the top here, for additional information, contact department staff. So if it's a drainage project, contact Drainage, Parks and Rec. You can contact Lauren or Jared over at, at Parks. Contact me for engineering projects. Dudley or John Harshman for facility projects. And I'll also make mention that for our, our major projects that will have real impact to the public, we hope to have updates on the, oh, I have something really exciting, some budget stuff on there, but we hope to have some things on Facebook and on the front page of the website, similar to what we had when the Shirts Parkway project was going on. When you go down through here, you can see, I'll get this queued up for Lisa, what's developing in Shirts. But we'll have better updates with more specific information about projects that are going to impact you and your neighbors and, and other folks in the city. There are some projects that you'll never see, because there are wastewater line in Southern Shirts that are going across undeveloped property. Huge, huge project for the city. So we've got updates in here, it's very expensive, we need to keep council updated on it, but you'll never see it. But some of these other ones, we'll try and have more pictures, timely information as the project goes along. So, that's kind of it. Any questions? Okay. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm going to Swallow Road, Willa Grove, Stakes. And so I see fifteen eighteen is on here, and the new elementary school across the street, it's, have you come over there in the mornings when the school?
The traffic?
Yes, the traffic.
Yes.
And so if you're coming out of the Stakes or even Willa Grove, there's no turning lane for you to go left? To go right, yes, towards I-ten, but not towards the other way. So is there any thoughts about putting a light out there? I know we have one there on Schaefer Road, but are there any thoughts about what's going to happen?
So there will probably not be a light at either of the entrances to Willa Grove, any time in the near future. The next light that will be on fifteen eighteen will likely be at Ray Corbett, so that should help some. You can always go out to Schaefer, I guess go through the neighborhood and out there. I will also say that there, the school zone flashing lights have been hit or miss as far as they're functioning. We actually, there's been a huge group email going around with PD, Tech dot, the school district, the city, trying to work it out. We have a meeting scheduled for, where's Dudley? I think it's Thursday to, to get that worked out. Tech dot is, is out there almost every day trying to fine-tune the flashers. Hopefully that will help some. Fortunately, we're going to improve fifteen eighteen altogether, that should help with the traffic as well, but twenty-twenty-two is when it'll start. So, it'll be here before you know it. Yeah, and then, and then that'll be a real nightmare for about five years, but, you know, twenty-thirty, it should be in great shape.
So you, you set a light by Corbett, do you know when that's going to happen?
Oh, no, that's, it's at le- at least a few years, years away.
The building will come.
I'm Gary Kennedy, President of the Greenshire Estates HOA, and the question I always get in our meetings is the, I know the Greenshire Homeowners Association maintains the green belt, but is there any plans or discussions about the flooding situation in the green belt and maybe directing it to a point where it doesn't come on the residents' properties?
Do we have that one? Is that on your radar, Dudley?
So Drainage is overscheduled to do some maintenance where that crosses underneath Woodland Oaks, and so we've got a lot of silt in there, especially in, in that, in that bridge structure. Literally, it was called into us by, by the Greenshire HOA and said, "Hey, when are you guys going to get out here?" Right? I said, "Call and hold us accountable," and they did. And so we said, "We're going to get out there as soon as it stops raining," which finally happened yesterday. And so we're waiting to get it a little drier. It's, it's going to have to get pretty dry before we can get in there and work it, just because it is the green belt area. We're slated for more rain Thursday and Friday, so hopefully tomorrow, the drainage guys will be able to get out there, get down in that box structure, see how deep that problem is, and then work on, on getting the approach to that cleaned out, and then after that. The desilting of that entire area is, is, is a bigger project, so desilting it from Green Valley Road all the way down to the back of Deer Creek where Sybilla would take over. But that is also a project that needs to be done, and is on the Drainage Project list. Funding, that's going to be a little bit different matter, but we're working on that.
Yeah, I'm the levels of North Cliff. Under your street pro- or your engineering projects, you have North Cliff Mill and Overlay. Is that going to include anything with the driveways or sidewalks? Because the sidewalks, some of them are less than two feet wide, do not meet the American Retribution Act. They're sitting at forty-degree angles.
We understand that. At this time, the sidewalks in a few locations will be improved, but not wholesale throughout the neighborhood. That's true, that's true. Unfortunately, with the funding that we've got available, if we wanted to do the sidewalks as well, we'd have to cut down the length of streets that we would do significantly.
You did that in the past, despite the all work done. You did that in the past, despite you all weren't done.
Well, we also have a future effort to assess sidewalks throughout the city and find the locations that are either missing sidewalks or have that similar situation where they're, they either weren't constructed to ADA standards to begin with, or they're in significant disrepair because of roots or, or settling, or, or what have you.
Those sidewalks were put in nineteen seventy-three with the subdivision, would have had ADA back.
Right. And you didn't have shirts back then, I don't think, did you? So, so, and I, I can't give you an answer that you're going to jump for joy about right now. We'll have...
It's all my people in the area that's...
Yes. Understood. So, but, but watch for updates. I don't believe those plans are a hundred percent done yet. We don't have final cost estimates in. So exactly the amount of work that will be done on sidewalks is, is uncertain to me at the moment, but we should be going out to bid within the next few months. So we'll know one way or another soon, and we can get you an update on what's included. Just a minute.
I have one more question. I'm sorry, I forgot this one. I need to find out. Myth or fact, once the builder is out of your development and the streets have been destroyed, will Shirts come in and redo the streets?
They get put into the pot with all the other streets in the city that also have issues, and the mayor just pointed out, we do every four to five years, an assessment of all the streets in the city so that we can assess which streets are holding up, which are declining rapidly, which are really bad, but they've been bad forever, and how bad they are. And then we have a certain amount of funding, and of course, that varies from, from year to year, to figure out how we can best spend the money to hold off expensive maintenance projects and also improve roads that, that are in need of repair.
Well, I'm with Fairway Ridge. I'm the homeowner president for Fairway Ridge.
Okay.
And Armadillo has six homes to finish out there, and they're out. But the roads on Eagle Valley down there, I have emails coming to me about, what do we do about the sinkholes? That's how bad the ruts and the holes are in those, the street down there. So that was the question I needed to find out.
Okay, well, as far as significant potholes, cracking issues like that, we'll get with Public Works, and in some cases, they'll go out and, and patch. What, these, the projects that we're talking about in here are projects that are wholesale, where either milling and overlaying an entire road, reconstructing an entire road, putting a, a new chip seal on with some base repair. Public Works still takes care of those. Sometimes they're big, but they're small, relatively speaking, things that they can do in-house or hire a contractor to come out and do quickly, that are more of the patch-type projects.
Okay, thank you.
So, so keep reporting those. Okay, I'll get to you. Yes, ma'am?
Oh, I was just wondering, the, the road off of, I guess, fifteen eighteen to Corbett, that long road, is that, is that along to the city or is that along to the district?
The road that, that intersects fifteen eighteen?
Uh-huh.
Ray Corbett Drive, that belongs to the city. The road that goes in front of Corbett out to Lower Sagan, that is, belongs to the school district.
Okay, with that long road, is there any projects ten or later to put any floodlights? Because when you go early in the mornings or, you can't see when you're driving back from a meeting or something, that whole, that whole strip is just black.
The whole length of Corbett from fifteen eighteen going back? Okay, we can, we can put a request. I think that CPS...
Turning up at fifteen eighteen to it.
Right, so, so they're...
Right there on that divider where you turn into it, with a prime point for it, so you don't wreck into the, I've been there, I guess we just about hit the curve one time this winter.
Okay, and I think we do, Doug can correct me if I'm wrong, we'll request CPS to install a light, and then we pay, we pay for the power for the light. But, but that generally gets taken care of fairly quickly, I think.
CPS is a little slower than you think.
A little slow, yeah, GVC is, is usually really responsive. Not to say that CPS isn't responsive, but they're a little bigger, I guess they move a little slower. Yeah.
So you just call, just to remind them.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes?
Yes, Richard Stevens, Belmont Park. This is, this question is in regard to the turnaround project at eleven oh three. And it's causing quite a bit of congestion on eleven oh three. And what we're trying to ask the city to do is put signs up on Belmont Parkway and that Wienerstein area to keep the eighteen-wheelers and, and the traffic that's deciding that, hey, I don't want to go up to that light and wait, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes. And so they're cutting through the neighborhood, and it, and it's tearing up our roads. And so what we'd like to do is that the city can put, know through signs, and then that way, when they do cut through, that we can possibly get some citations written or something like that, and then that way, we can prevent our roads from being damaged.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, that request, and I'm sure, I think Richard Jebitz is here. He's, we've spent many, many evenings discussing just that situation for Belmont and for, on Fairline and Riada, that we can't really completely restrict the traffic on those roads from having eighteen-wheelers go through. We can do, I think it's really a PD enforcement issue to try and keep the heavy trucks as much as possible off the residential roads.
If those roads aren't working out for that type of traffic.
Well, understood. Unfortunately, because of the congestion, it's very, very difficult to, to force them to stay on eleven oh three. And I'll remind you that eleven oh three itself will be going under construction here in the next year or so. Will take several years, and that may even make the problem worse.
That's why I'm trying to...
Right.
So, we, we had that complaint a few months back, and some of the residents saw where the, they were, they were gravel haulers or raw haulers, and somebody saw where they were going, and they were going to some subdivisions in Sybilla. And our partner city, Sybilla, we were able to contact them. They went out and met with the developers and the builders, and they met with their folks, their, their supply folks for, for the dirt and the base that they were getting, and kept them out of our subdivisions for a while. It's a tough thing for us to enforce. We're working on some ordinance work that'll make it a little bit easier to, to do some things on some of those roads that will make it easier for PD to enforce. But we've got to make sure we're compliant with state law, and that we're not unfairly impacting them where they, where we create a liability situation for the city. So we're aware of that, we're trying to do that. But if you know for sure, hey, these, these trucks are cutting through and going to, I'll just pick, the vistas of Sybilla, or whatever the subdivision is, if you'll let us know, we'll call Sybilla, they'll go visit with those guys and try to keep the trucks out of the neighborhoods. They understand that as well.
A lot were just cutting down, and then they're cutting right back up, Wienerstein. They're just missing that corner where all that traffic is. And that's, that's what we're trying to...
Yeah, and unfortunately, I think it's going, like Kathy said, it's going to get worse before it gets better. But we, we are working that. There's a number of city roads that, that we need to, to try to do some better work on, to try to limit the amount of weight we have on them, to try to prolong their lives. So, so we're working that through the Transportation Safety Advisory Committee, which a handful of folks in this room sit on. That's a great place to bring those. I know we've done a lot of issues for Belmont and Riada in there. But that, that's also another good thing to do, but we're working with that group and trying to get some ordinance changes made so that we can do something about those trucks when they're on those. Even though those roads are made through, through, through traffic, we, we'd like to keep the eighteen-wheelers off of them because the residents consider them residential roads, right? So they're cutting across them and doing that kind of thing, and it creates a little bit greater sense of danger when you have a, a big, heavy eighteen-wheeler coming down one of those roads.
Okay, thanks for the clarifications, Dudley.
One other quick thing, and it's probably a TechDOT thing, that when you're on the Frontage Road heading northbound on thirty-five at eleven oh three, there's, you know, you got a stoplight there. And red stop sign means stop, and proceed on red, you know, after you've come to a stop. And if people aren't doing that, if they're making a right turn to turn on eleven oh three, they're just, a lot of them just run right on through there. Me being retired law enforcement, I come to a complete stop, and I've almost got rear into it several times. Because they put a sign up, you know, that, or a, a green arrow showing that if you're going to be turning onto eleven oh three, you don't have to stop, or, you know, some big sign up there says stop being stopped when there's a red light.
So this is when you're traveling north on the Frontage Road?
You're traveling north on the Frontage Road.
And you want to turn right on to eleven oh three?
Heading eastbound on eleven oh three.
And there's not a yield lane?
Well, they've had it now to where the outside lane, the number two lane, is a left turn, I mean, a right turn only, and the number one or center lane is either straight ahead or you turn and go over the little sharp ridge. So people who are in the left turn only lane, a lot of them think they don't have to stop, even though there's a red light at the thing, and they just roll right on through it. And for people who do stop, it's a hazard.
Okay, so we do have a pretty good, well, we have a very good relationship with TechDOT. We can talk to them about it. Sometimes they're able to help, sometimes they can explain to us why it is the way it is. But we'll, we'll pass that concern along. Yes?
Since we're talking about traffic, as you know, coming out of Greenshire Estates, there's a big dip, and there's a big blind spot right there coming out. I would venture to say eighty percent of the traffic does not do thirty miles an hour. And it seems like, I don't know if it's me being unlucky, but seems like most every time I come, or half the time I come out of the subdivision, there's always someone at the bottom of that hill doing, coming up about forty miles an hour and almost get hit. We have some teenage drivers now in the neighborhood. We only have eight houses in, in the neighborhood, but we've got visitors coming in and out of the neighborhood. There's a problem with that blind spot. We need a seg, we need a, the, the sign that shows the speed limit like there is down there, further down Green Valley Road, past the school, that shows twenty-five miles an hour. We need one there, right before you, right around, you're in the middle of that blind spot or what have you.
Okay.
Because that is very dangerous, and I'm sure at some point, somebody's going to get hit. But the biggest problem is the speed limits. They're not doing thirty miles an hour. They're doing, I would say, forty-five miles an hour on average.
On that subject there, council has voted in and approved that we're getting approximately six of those signs to put up in problem areas that, that flash, if it's speed limit thirty and you're doing thirty-two, thirty-three, they start flashing. So we will be getting those shortly.
Have y'all got those mapped out, those areas?
No, sir, we don't.
The other one is also, what, Helen, you were talking about, what are you doing out there on Green Valley?
Well, that I don't know, but...
Because I always have to frequently on Green Valley Road.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to ask. I was taking notes about the eleven oh three access road issue to pass that on. I'd missed specifically where it was you were speaking of. Just, yes, sir?
Coming out of Greenshire Estates on Green Valley Road.
Okay.
Turning left, there's a, you go down the hill toward Roy Richard, and...
Okay, yeah, I know what you're talking about now.
They're coming up the other way.
Okay.
When there's a car in the bottom of that, bottom of that hill, I'm in a truck coming out of my subdivision. I cannot see even the top of that car, even in a truck.
Okay. And I, what I'll do is I'll mention it again to our traffic unit. Dudley mentioned him, Corporal Ariaga, he actually is part of our Traffic Safety Advisory Committee. If you've gone to any of those meetings, he attends quite a few of those. But we have some of those signed trailers as well. They're a little bit bigger, and if, if I'm not mistaken, they keep track of, do they count two? Yeah, so they're almost, we used to have a little box that attached to a pole called a Speed Spy, and this trailer does a little bit of everything, so we can do...
There was one out there maybe a month or two ago.
Okay.
I don't, but it was out there for about two weeks or so, but...
Did it seem like it helped, in your opinion?
I thought it did.
Okay. So maybe we just...
I think it needs to be permanent.
Because we, we have two of those, and right now, with the start of school, we had to remind some of our younger drivers where they can't park because of the construction at Clemmons. So they're being utilized for that, but we'll see if we can't move some around and, and get some back out there. Thanks, Helen. Also, to let you know, sometimes the, even the signs that are, are mounted permanently, they're semi-permanent, and we will choose to move them around occasionally. I think earlier, we're talking about a totally different topic, the element of surprise was, was mentioned. Folks tend to get used to things, if they see them every day, so if we have the flashing sign out there, and, and enforcement doesn't go hand in hand with it, folks are like, well, so that's cool, it shows me the sign, let me see how fast I can go, and...
Is there a sign there? Like caution, blind spot, or something that we could install?
Sure, there's, there are a variety of, of approved, Texas sanctioned approved signs that we can use to, to call some attention to this situation, and we, we can look into that.
When y'all start making the decision on where the six or however many assets you're going to get, can you please keep Belmont Park in, in consideration on Belmont Parkway? Because y'all have brought the temporary one out before, and it does make a difference. I personally probably speed more than I should, and every time I see one, I ha, it's like a game to get down to that speed.
Oh, so you play the game to get down to the speed. Way to go.
As quickly as possible.
So my point is, is that the things work.
Okay. Well, that's good, good, good news.
Well, we're recording. Oh, I forgot.
Well, at least you didn't say you, you see how high you can get it to go, right? So, so, we have a, a real handy email, engineering@shirts.com. And like Helen said, you can email her about anything, you can email us about anything as well. We'll get it where it needs to go. If it needs to go to Public Works, we'll get it over to them. If it needs to go to Community Services, we'll get it to them. Or if it needs to go back to PD, we'll send it to them. But engineering@shirts.com. A, a number of us get those, and, and we'll see that it gets taken care of. The lovely Sarah Gonzalez.
Thank you, Kathy. Good evening, everybody. My name is Sarah Gonzalez, and I am the Assistant to the City Manager. The Public Affairs Department reports up through me, but our Public Affairs Director could not be here tonight, so I am filling in in her absence. To switch gears a little bit, we are going to touch on city communication, and specifically the way that we communicate with our main external customers. So that is to say, our residents and our businesses. First and foremost, and the one that I think that most everyone is familiar with, is our Shirts Magazine. This, this is a monthly publication that is wholly owned and operated by the City of Shirts, and it's produced internally by our Public Affairs Staff. The magazine is mailed directly to over twelve thousand local residents, or local households and over one thousand businesses. It features content such as city news and information that is going on for the month, but it also has some stories that focus on community interest pieces. So for example, this month featured a young Shirts resident who, you know, with her work in ballet, has done great things. So it was really exciting to read and learn more about her with that. Additionally, one of the things that we are working to grow is our digital reach. And by that, we do that through three different communication channels, and that is our electronic newsletter, our website, and also social media. So now for the electronic newsletter, are any of y'all subscribed to that? Get it? Okay. So for those who may not know how to get on or be, get subscribed to it, it can, I was going to show you first what it looks like. I get my email up. So when you subscribe to it, this is an email that is sent twice a month, and it includes information that is timely relative to when it is sent out. So as you can see here, this is the most recent one, and we have information about our local events, the Shirts queue that is being rescheduled due to the weather that we had. It has information about the budget that was adopted. Again, our Shirts Magazine, which you can find online. And then it also has some information about city events coming up. So we have Breakfast with the Blue on September twenty-ninth, we have our star party, and then also information on the annual fall cleanup. So within each of these events that are, are put into the, the email, you can click and receive more information. So if you would like to, please, this doesn't close out, okay. If you would like to be, get on the subscription list, you can always email magazine@shirts.com. And there's several people on that email that will receive it and make sure that you get added. So this is a great way that if you'd like to, you know, receive information right in your phone, that you carry around and can pull up. Like I said, it does come twice a month. And then our city website, which several folks already tonight have kind of showed you some features of it, it was redesigned back in twenty seventeen in the fall. For those of you that may remember the old website, this one is definitely more user-friendly and, you know, designed to be more intuitive for what folks are actually looking to find when they search, search the website. There is an option right here, it says to create an account. So by doing this, this is another way that you can then be added to our, our subscription as well for the e-newsletter. And then you can just kind of look around here and, you know, it has information, again, some of these, the same events that are occurring, you know, go along on this one, it has the carousel, so you can scroll through and see what all we, we put on there. And this is updated daily as new things or events are added on. And then the city highlight section, this is something that's more for permanent things. So there was, as Kathy mentioned, the information when Shirts Parkway reconstruction was going on, there was a link right here that would take you to, you know, the... there was a link right here, um, that would take you to, you know, the updates and progress checkpoints. Um, and so as we get more of those big items, like she was, big project items, we will make sure to, to update the website, so folks can, um, look on there as well. Lastly is our social media. And so for those of you that don't follow the City of Shirts on Facebook, um, we would encourage you guys to as well because we do find that that is a very timely way to communicate information with folks. Um, as I mentioned, uh, there is, uh, when we had the Shirts Q event that was scheduled to happen this past weekend, um, we had actually created an event on Facebook and had, um, pretty good, uh, following for that. But because we had done that, so when we, uh, had the information that, or made the decision that we were going to, sorry, didn't log into it. When we made the decision that we were going to reschedule it to a different weekend, we were able to, um, update that on the event page immediately and then it got pushed out, uh, to people's news feeds. And by doing this, you can see on here at this point, there was fifty-four shares, twenty-one comments, people tagging other people in there. So, you know, it's really a way, as things happen immediately, to be able to stay connected. Um, and as you saw, I did access it from our city website. Um, when you, this goes back, up here are our social media channels, right here are Facebook and Instagram and our YouTube channel. And this is after the city council meeting and I believe the planning and zoning meetings get posted on here as well. Um, so if y'all have any additional questions or, you know, again, wanna try to figure out how to get subscribed for these, um, you know, ways to receive this communication from the city, please get with me afterwards. My name's Sarah Gonzalez and if there's no questions, I'll turn it over to Lisa.
Thank you, Sarah. Good evening, everyone. I'm Lisa Wood, I'm the Director of Planning and Community Development. And I oversee both the Building Inspections, uh, and Planning Department, as well as the Permitting Department. And, um, we work with our, uh, developers to help them through, get through the process as well as guide our residents through the permitting process. Um, and, and in that, um, we also try to, uh, provide as much information on new developments because most of the time people are driving around and they see dirt turning and they're like, what's going on there? Well, we're available by telephone at any time, well, eight to five. Um, and then we also have a tool now that's, uh, was implemented probably about six months ago that shows the, the larger residential projects, um, and as well as the commercial projects that are happening here in the city. We try to, uh, put those, uh, update those weekly and we also, uh, work to get them on when the building permit has been issued. So before the dirt starts turning, we wanna make sure that it's up here so that if you're wondering on Saturday what's happening, you can actually come in and look. As, uh, Kathy mentioned earlier, let me see if I can get them off work. So, you can do it several ways. At the very bottom of the page, Kathy had shown down at the bottom, there was a, uh, an area where you could click that said, what's developing in shirts, as well as you can go to, uh, Business and Development. And then, oops. And then right down here is what's developing in shirts. And, uh, what we do is we update it. Weekly and it's, and it's interactive, so you have the ability to... So you have the ability to view this in several, several different ways. You can view it in a list. Right now, I think we have about nineteen or twenty projects that are up here and there are different things that you can see on the projects. Um, all of them show a picture of kind of a site plan of kinda how the site's supposed to be laid up. There's a description of what's happening at the property and what it's going to be and the address and you have the ability to view it from a list, the map, or just look at the documents themselves. Additionally, um... We have the ability to open a ta, open the application in a new tab, which kinda gives you a, uh, kinda shows you basically, uh, the project on one side and the map. And then down here, you can see all the different projects. So, I'll go ahead and open one of the projects. Just by selecting one, is the, the Staybridge Suites. And you can see that it explains, um, where it's located. And a description of what's happening at the project. So, uh, in this, whoops, I did the Stabridge, I might pick something else. Sorry about that, guys. Well, I'll explain this one. This is one nine-nine-six Shirts Parkway. Um, it, it's basically, if you can see right here is, this is Shirts Parkway and this is Live Oak Road and this is the, the extension here that's coming to the new subdivision. Right here on the corner, there's a Valero. And then right next to that, they, um, there's a plan for a new, uh, retail center, I guess, or some office spaces. Um, it's a total of, of five office buildings. Um, each of those buildings have a variety of square footage. Um, currently, right now, we don't know what's actually gonna be located in that building, but it gives you an idea of what's gonna be happening there. It shows, you can actually take a look at the site itself and see how it's going to develop and what the plan looks like. And then for each one of these, you'll find, on the list, the same similar, similar, um, items for each one of these. Um, earlier there was a gentleman, and I'm, I'm not sure if he's still here, but he asked about inspections, an inspection on a water heater. We currently, uh, offer inspections for, um, basically anybody who needs an inspection can call them in up to six AM in the morning and we perform those inspections basically the same day within twenty-four hours. So, uh, we typically have a very high volume in inspections. However, we do accommodate all of our property owners. And, uh, we also have that available to us interactively as well, under the How Do I tab here? And under Requesting an Inspection. Typically in a situation where those are water heater, there's typically a contractor involved. They typically go into the system, they request the inspection. Um, they also let us know when the homeowner is gonna be at home so that we can accommodate their schedule as best as possible. Our inspections, our inspectors do pick up the telephone and call, um, the residents to try to make sure that they're gonna be at home and everybody's gonna be available typically. Um, and, uh, basically the inspection gets requested here. Generally, it gets inspected, uh, requested by the contractor on certain, um, types of permits that are pulled. Do you have any questions on the, what's developing in shirts or how to request an inspection?
I have a question about inspections.
Sure.
I recently had a roof replaced and I contacted the city, the Inspection Department cause I wanted to see if they had anything like a bad boy list, to make sure that I was using a, a good vendor, if you will. Is there any type of information out there?
So, we don't actually right now have a list of anything that's on the website. We wouldn't wanna provide that information, uh, give you a recommendation for anybody. However, we can run a list of all the contractors that have been registered with the city, so we certainly can provide you that.
The gentleman was very nice and that's what he did. And then they're about to use him. He, he looked him up and said, yeah, they've done business in, in shirts before. So, I went ahead and went with him. I just wondered if there was any type of bad boy list, cause I know there have been plenty, you know, especially roofing companies that have not necessarily done good work.
Right. Yes, sir?
So Clark McChesney, L.A., Hates Estates. So I, I think we've actually had this conversation before, uh, Lisa. My question is, for those communities like mine that have a relatively active Architectural Control Committee or Architectural Review Committee, is it possible for the city to remind someone who's pulling a permit that they should check with their HOA to determine whether that's required or not? Because what happens in our case is we get people who say, well, I got a permit from the city. Well, yeah, you did, but you didn't get permission from us. Um, and, you know, so in, in this specific case, we've got a guy who's building a house in his backyard, um, literally, it's three thousand square foot garage, five feet off the fence line. Um, and he got a permit from the city, you know, and then all of a sudden, for whatever reason, he decided to, to ask us for permission after he does all the footers. So, so, uh, again, the, the real question is, can that become a part of a routine process? Someone comes to pull a permit, you live in, uh, in an HOA, do you have, not, not asking you to enforce, but simply remind, do you have a, a clearance from your Architectural Review Committee? You need to, to verify that before you start work.
I think currently now are, we have two folks that do the plan review and we do try to remind folks that they need to contact the HOA and just make sure that they have approval to do that. Um, we can't deny a permit based on that, how, if it meets all the city, you know, regulations in our building code. However, we do do our best to remind folks, hey, you need to make sure that you, um, talk with your Architectural Review Committee. Anybody else? Thank you.
All right, well, if, if you will, I've got this one. Um, if you'll join me in thanking staff for the work that they did this evening putting this together. I, I promise that if they weren't here and it was just a city council, we'd have quite a train wreck. One, one other number for you, cause we, we, we may run out of time here this evening. Um, and for those of you that have, have seen my campaign materials in the past, you already have this. But for anybody that doesn't, this phone number is two one zero four five two eight thousand three. Now, I work for a living during the daytime and if I'm in a meeting or doing my day job, I may not answer you, uh, but if you leave me a message, I will call you back. Um, and I have this on my nightstand at night, so if there's an emergency and, and nine-one-one is down, you can call me, but I, I, if it's not, don't call me at two. Because the, the, there's a light that flashes in, in, in my room and my wife gets very angry with me. So, you know, now that we've completed that portion, which, uh, all right, some things that, that Ms. Brenda, and thank you Ms. Brenda for your particular individual work putting this together, thought would be of interest to all of you, um, let's open it up. Things that we didn't cover that we'd like to talk about.
I have a question. A PUD ordinance, who enforces a PUD ordinance?
So I don't think, um, uh, we have PUDs anymore, but rather PDDs, Plan Development Districts.
Well, when we...
And then... Right. And so if there are restrictions for, and you're gonna end up answering part of this anyway, uh, because, you know, the staff are the experts and we're the generalists. If there are agreements that we have with regard to number of lots, landscaping, things of that nature, that were part of that planned unit development or planned development district as we do now, then the, then the city enforces those issues. Now, you may wanna expand on that or expound upon it, but that's basically it. If it's, if it's part of the PDD or PUD covenants, not the covenants that run with the land. I'll get a little feedback. Should I step away from that microphone? Or should I step back that way? Back this way, okay. All right. So that the light's in my eyes. Is that good? That better? Okay. So again, not the covenants that run with the land itself, but the development itself. Placement of the roads, where the drainage is, number of lots, et cetera, should come back to the city. Okay?
Can I add just a little bit, ma'am?
Please.
So, so it is the zoning and so typically when the Plan Development District or the PDD is, um, drafted and, and looked at, typically that happens at the very beginning stages of the process. And so most of them specifically, um, talk about the way the property is going to develop and how it's going to develop when it's developing. Um, and typically, um, the, the last PDDs that we've been writ, that have been written also include, um, the, how things are gonna be enforced if it's developed over the time and we've had changes to codes. So it is part of the zoning, but depending on what type of, uh, questions that you have, if it's written, written into the zoning, then yes, we would be responsible for taking a look to make sure that there's compliance.
So what if your developers packed up in the...
And what, what would be the problem with the zoning at that time?
Well, there's things that were in the PUD that were never done. And you know, I've been to the concrete over the years, talking about it. But now the developer is like, I'm done, I'm out of here. So how do you go back from developers to these PUDs or things that were never taken care of?
I, I think it depends on what exactly you're talking about when you say wasn't done. Um, because they, I guess there are certain lots and things that are turned over to the HOA and I know that you're talking about Sedona and Crossline and it's not completely built out.
Well, Sedona is...
But the entire, yes, Sedona portion of it, but the rest of it is built out as part of Crossline. And so is there something specific we need to be looking at for you?
Well, we'll, we'll give you the list.
Okay.
Okay.
And can we speak to the pit pads and maybe y'all have some conversation to...
Yeah, so, um, uh, the, the pit pads and, and the like and short-term rentals. So we've got, uh, we've already requested the city attorney brief the city council at an upcoming meeting and we said October, latest, we really didn't wanna wait much longer. Uh, this has come up over the last six to ten months or thereabouts, a bit more than we've seen in the past. It wasn't something that was even really a topic of discussion a couple of years ago. Uh, but the city attorney will be preparing a brief for the city council so that we know what we can and can't do with regard to state law. Uh, and I think you may remember that when, when it was brought up in front of the city council and I said that everyone that has an interest in this should call, A, their, their state senator and B, uh, their state rep and ask them what they plan to do at a state level to regulate this. Uh, because at the moment, state law is heavily in favor, and by the way, I'm not an attorney, I don't play one on television, I did not go to law school. Um, uh, it's heavily in favor of the landowner. I mean, you heard earlier, we talked about how code enforcement can't just come and peer over your fence or look through the cracks in the fence to see what's going on. Is, there are very strong protections, uh, for landowners in the state of Texas. Um, even to the point that, uh, and, and not to bring up things that have happened in the past that cost us money, but, uh, once a zoning is in place and someone is vested, uh, we can't come around behind them and change the zoning, uh, to get, to stop them from doing the development they wanna do, uh, because we're gonna get sued and we're gonna lose. And so that's where we are on this one right now. The city attorney is gonna come before us and brief us, let us know what we can do, what we can't do under state law. And then what they think is sort of non-risky behavior as far as regulation and what might be risky behavior as far as regulation goes.
So that house that was built, that's a pit pad?
Mm-hmm.
Where they can rent it out to as many people as they want? They can still do that right now or you're saying they can't?
They can do that right now. And, and, and there's, there are certain things that they can't do with regard to other city ordinances, but there's not a city ordinance that we've put in place that specifically says you can or cannot rent in that fashion in the City of Shirts. It's just not something we have, that we've taken up before because it's come up in, in the most recent, I would say, six to twelve months. Uh, and we, it is our habit to tread carefully on things like that. Consult with our city attorney and, and make sure that we're, we're neither going beyond what Austin is trying to do, cause they're probably gonna get sued and lose, uh, and not doing nothing and finding that middle ground that's the right balance for us. Uh, at the same time, I, I'm gonna be talking to Dr. Campbell's office and to Representative Kemble's office and, and say, hey, you know, it'd be helpful just like the texting ban if there was a statewide standard.
Well, we just wanted to get some feedback because some of the homeowners went to that city council meeting and some of the feedback on it was, well, there was only fourteen people that showed an interest, so we're gonna pursue it. And then they said, well, some of the city council were in the military and have some heart for these guys that are in the military that are trying to do this.
Now, we're, we're having the city attorney come and brief us.
But just so that we can be clear on our section, we can't do anything about Crosslines, but just so that we can get our folks situated, we don't have one in our areas over the Crossline.
Yeah, city, city attorney's gonna come and brief the city council and, and give us an overview of what we could do, uh, what we potentially should do and, and what we should not do.
Well, the, the season has been noticed by the developer as well and I don't know about the building, but nothing about it, just get up what they could be wanting.
Yeah, and there's an HOA down there and that use is not permitted by the HOA.
Correct.
Now granted, all of you being HOA presidents know, you can't flip a switch and turn them off, you have to give notice and you have to give notice again. And, and then you, you, then you're gonna, I mean, it's a long process to enforce and they know how to play the game rather well to enforce those.
It's not, cause the Crossline is still under debt, or is it there? I don't have any more to say. They're, they're under debt, so they're, they don't have even a homeowner on board.
Right. Yeah, same as when my, my subdivision was developed. Until we had, I think it was, uh, we had to have a majority in all five phases before we actually took over the HOA. Uh, we had a majority in, in four of the five phases, then you'd take it over till we had a majority in the fifth phase. But city attorney's... But city attorney is going to come and brief us and then city council, I suspect, is going to take a close look at what we can do and where the balance is, right? For example, on my street, there's 12 houses on my cul-de-sac. We live in a gated community. HOA is, I would say, average to slightly stronger than average as far as attendance and participation. Mr. Davis might disagree, we live in the same neighborhood. And I've got two homes that are on the street that are rented to military right now. And I've had one that's across the street that was rented by an owner who was in a residence of Sweden and all kinds of other things. And it's, we'll look at it.
Well, that's not a problem, but when you're rented to three different people that live there.
Or six different, and they're posted on Facebook, but when they get there, they don't care.
Yeah, and at the end of our street, we had three different unrelated family groups living in a single house. So I absolutely understand.
You have families that have maybe three family levels in there, but that's a little bit different than...
Yeah, no, these were unrelated people that didn't know each other until they moved into the property.
If they're a rental, you can turn into the base. I'm sorry? Yeah, I mean, they don't live in our subdivision. They bought houses and that's what they're doing with them, but they are in the military. They're not deployed, but they are in the military.
If they're homeowners, you can turn into the base.
They are, yeah. But that was a reason.
And the challenge is that a lot of the owners of the properties are outside of the city, or outside of the county, or outside of the state. Anyway, but again, we are going to take it up as council. It is a no problem. Yes, sir?
Yes, I wanted to address whether or not there was anything in the ordinance or with city. Because in April, in our community, we had the tree trimmers coming in and they were trimming the live oaks. So when I contacted the city of Shirts, I was transferred over to the Parks Department and he said there was no ordinance for trimming the oaks. And I brought up the concern about the oak will. And so I didn't know if there was something on the agenda, because I know with Garden Ridge, I know with the city of San Antonio, they have ordinance. We're a gated community, so I was able to contact the police and chase them out. But I know with oak will and with being informed that there was nothing here for the city of Shirts.
By the way, this is my HOA. And I am absolutely ignorant on that subject and recently trimmed my own oak in the front yard and hope I did it right. Do we have anything on that?
No, yeah, well, we don't have a regulation that says when folks can and can't trim their trees. And if you're familiar with the issue of oak will, you're really, there are certain times of the year that it's better to trim trees because it tends to not encourage the spread. Again, the key thing you want to do when you hire a contractor, you really want to make sure that they come through and they paint the cuts. And that's the key thing with that. So we don't have a regulation that says you can or can't trim trees at a particular time of the year. And I'm actually not familiar, I'll go back and double check tomorrow, I'm not familiar that San Antonio has that item. They certainly have information, as we do about, or to tell you when it's best to trim, how best to trim, making sure what you want to do to try to prevent the spread of oak will. But no, we don't have a regulation that says you can't go out and trim a tree at a particular time. And I'll work with parks and planning to double check that I wasn't aware that any of the cities around this, including San Antonio, while they encourage, that they actually have any law that prevents you from trimming at certain times of the year because of that. But we'll take a look at it.
All right, no one else? Yes, sir?
On the North Cliff Golf Course, you know, the sign is still up out there if it's trying to sell the front 600 feet for commercial property. Is there any way to get that zoning changed to a rain belt or something? Because if we lose that golf course, it's the only golf course we have in Shirts we can have. But if we lose that golf course, you're going to take that entire area up there on Country Club Drive, North Cliff, Sandy Hills, and all of them, and diminish their value by about 50%.
So here's what I'll say about that. And so we just had a joint meeting with planning and zoning and with the city council. And we talked a little bit about whether or not we want, as a city, to initiate, the city as the applicant, to change zoning through a number of places in the city. To take our zoning map that we have with all the zoning classifications for all the lands inside the city limits and look at our long-term development plan. What's the proper name for it? Our future land use plan. Long-term, future, the older I get, the less that matters. And make some changes to conform more to the future land use plan. I think that's the first philosophical question that has to be asked, is whether or not we, as a government entity, want to come to you as a landowner or whoever owns that golf course and say, by the way, we've decided, whether you like it or don't, we're going to change the zoning of your land. And if we're going to address that, we're going to answer that question. If it is the will of council that we're going to make some wholesale changes to zoning in various parts of the city to conform to the future land use plan, that's probably the single best time that we're going to have that discussion. Because right now, I don't know that's the will of council, to go and to change zoning of privately held land. We've done it occasionally in the past. My recollection is it's primarily been, I want to get my bearings of where we are, out here off of 1518 south of the base, so as not to jeopardize the mission of the base. Even then, the Air Force came to us and said, we really like you to limit development for residential development to one structure per 20 acres. Exactly. And imagine if you have, you know, 80 acres out there and you want to sell it to a developer to be developed, that's a tough one. If you have 10 acres and you've got three children and you want to subdivide that out and have children that can have, build a house and you can all live in that same vicinity, that would take that away. And we also have a little, you know, again, landowner rights being well protected by state law. State law telling us, eh, you really can only limit them to five acres for each structure. So I know I'm being a little bit long-winded. We're going to take up the discussion about whether or not we want to go forward. Planning and zoning, Greenwald and others that may be here. Planning and zoning brought forward some commentary around, you know, we've got a future land use plan. It doesn't match up to the zoning plan. We ought to make those things congruent. If that's the direction we go, we'll take a look at it.
I can see, you know, 600 feet, 600 foot wide strip mall, you know, off the front end road there. What you might get back on that, you're going to lose a whole lot of money on all the housing and all the people in there that are going to be moving out, houses going to crap, and taxes. You're not going to get that anywhere.
It's a delicate situation.
Especially when you live there.
Yeah, indeed. And I guess all I can say is we're actually going to be taking a look at whether or not the city is going to go and actively make changes to zonings throughout the city to conform to the future land use plan. Yes, sir?
I'd like to just stand on that a little bit. That's going to impact several subdivisions out there. And what's going to happen if they sell off that front park? The owners are overzealous, they've already pretty well walked away from that course.
They really have.
They really have. Look, if you think it's not going to be a big drive over between Converse and Kirby and look at where Woodlake. And there weren't near as many subdivisions around that particular golf course as what we've got on this one. So they sell off that front park, that means that, I mean, that kills the golf course.
No golf course and no way of playing.
Well, if that. And yeah, nobody's, with as many 18-hole courses around, nobody's going to play nine holes. They'll walk away from it. So what's going to happen to all the fairways that are in between rows of houses? You've got a nightmare for the city coming through and keeping that all cleaned up. You can say, I'll put a lien on it. But we all know you're not going to get any money for that lien until that property sells.
It changes hands.
And I don't understand the mentality there of walking away from it, but they pretty well already have.
I've got pictures here of what happened at Houston National Golf Course when they did the same thing.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Six foot tall trees.
That's exactly where...
Six foot tall brass.
That's exactly what will have interwoven in those subdivisions out there. And Bill is right. Our property values will go down, which means your taxes that you'll receive as a city are going to go way down. I mean, it's, I understand what you're saying and I understand the dilemma the city's in there. But there's got to be something that can be done to save that. I know when I first moved out there, seven, eight years ago is when that golf course was in trouble then. And at that point, I spoke with several on the council and they said, don't worry about it, that golf course is not going anywhere. We're talking about possibly trying to take it over, you know, if it goes completely south. I don't know whether that's something that's even still on the table or not, but...
It wasn't feasible. They already decided it wasn't feasible for the city to take it.
But you're not talking about, you know, affecting 50 homeowners out there. You're talking about hundreds of homeowners out there that will be affected.
Indeed.
So it's, it's... I can have just a minute with you after the meeting too, sir?
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Sir, I live on that golf course as well and I can attest that there are so many people that have volunteered their personal time, their personal tools. They volunteered equipment. They've spent thousands of dollars on their own dollar to keep the golf course where it is. They've had to let the sand pits go brass because the owner who owns that golf course, he owns this golf course.
He does.
So it's a nightmare waiting to happen. And there are several subdivisions in Fairway and Sandy Hills, North Cliff. What are the other ones? So there are several. And there are hundreds and hundreds of people. Is there anything we can do, such as the gentleman said up front, that because the property is owned by somebody that's not maintaining their property, you said that you could have the city do it and then send a bill to him? Is there any way that could be a possibility?
You mean in the future, if they were to have completely abandoned the golf course and let it basically go fallow, let it grow on its natural...
Well, I don't know if that's the case with that other property being abandoned. I think they're just neglecting their responsibility. They're not doing what they're supposed to do, which is the same thing the owner of this golf course is doing.
Talking the entrance on Country Club on the right-hand side if you come in?
The gentleman...
I've heard of what I was talking about in front of Belmont Park that is commercial zone property that someone owns that they don't take care of.
Right on the entrance.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Actually, the sign that's there for the sale sign on it is for the property manager. I called them three times about coming out and cutting the grass and said, hope it arrives to it sometime.
That's pretty much what they said, yeah.
And then we go through, as Dudley described earlier, we seek compliance, seek compliance, and in the end, cut it and put a lien on it. And it rests until it gets sold and then they find they have encumbrances in their title.
And then they won't sell. It's a good idea.
It's a... Since moments like this, I wish I had a mayoral magic wand that would solve all issues and satisfy everyone. But I do not.
But if you would just convey to council, our great concern there, what's going on, and at least look into what can be done.
Yeah, and then you have four members here. And then I'm quite sure that their colleagues will hear from them as well. I know that Mr. Edwards is already well briefed. And can you reach out to each of them? He does, absolutely.
Ben, there, don't use your... I'm continuing.
That is an ongoing and work in progress. All right, others that we can try to answer this evening? All right, it appears, go ahead. The new fire station, number three.
Yeah, number three.
Dudley, you want to speak to that? Because again, my ignorance level is high, other than I know that we're working on it and we own the land and...
So we own the land. We are getting permits done for clearing, which I think fairly soon you will see some equipment up there clearing that land. And then the permits will come in, we'll continue to start building the land. We're slated for July, August of next year to have it open. We're hoping to have a groundbreaking ceremony, which will publicize through all the means that Sarah laid out of when that day is set. So we'll try to be able to come out and see that. But we are moving forward. We do have a temporary fire station three, for those that aren't aware of that, a little farther south on Trainer Hale and Whoppo, Weir Road, just north by 10 on Trainer Hale. We can put a temporary station in there on the property's CCL block for a sewer plant. So engine three, Fire Station Three is open in its temporary quarters. Next year, we should move it back out.
So we can go on the website and look at the flyer and get updated information on that and see what station we're calling.
Yes.
Sure.
On 3009, as you're approaching 1478, and you want to make a left-hand turn, right there at the train track, they've got that damn lot in there all the way down. And I see a lot of traffic, you know, backing up all the way towards them. When they're trying to come up and either go to the business, which is right across the street where there's a little water problem there and trying to rain hail down. It's terrible. But the issue that I'm... As you're coming up to the light, the way they've got that choked down, it looks like you need to have two lanes to be able to turn and one to go straight. And the way they've got it now is, and it's really, really bad in that area as far as it's bumpy and...
No, it's worse than bumpy. It's not just, it's not just bumpy, but it does this stuff across it too. So when I'm able, and my wife will let me, I'm out on two wheels. And you might imagine what it's like going out onto 78 on two wheels, trying to turn left there, slowing down through Sibolo before taking off up 78 towards the game.
I can imagine, I know.
Yes, sir, absolutely. So I'm well aware of that one. And we will remind text out of our concerns. I will say again, when I see them, I'm tired of being on my expensive Goldwing and thinking I'm going to fall over this way because there's a ruts like this right there, absolutely. And we have brought that up to text out before, we'll bring it up again. And maybe, as they're doing work on 1518 and 1103 and elsewhere, something will go wrong and we can call in a favor and say, you know, it would really ease our pain a lot of what's happening here at the turnarounds on 1103. If you'd fixed that spot over there on 78 and 3009, where the intersection is, and sometimes that works for us and sometimes it doesn't. But we will ask once again. Yes, ma'am?
So I know that in rural states, we are proactively... I told them about it earlier. Is there any updates about the zoning? Are there any updates about that areas? What's going on up 1518?
So up 1518, there's a section out front, I guess, that is general business or neighborhood services?
Yeah, the zoning case goes to council in a couple of weeks. Actually, I think because of the meeting schedule, it's October 23rd. So, that zoning case, the PNC heard, will go to council on October 23rd, and council will have a public hearing on it, if you're interested, you can get up there and speak as well, and they'll make the final decision.
So, it's already come before planning and zoning?
It's already come before the planning and zoning.
Do you notice off the top of your head what the recommendation for planning and zoning was, and what the vote was?
It was for denial.
Was for denial? And was that a unanimous vote?
No.
It was a split vote? Do you know what the split was?
Four-two, fourteen-four.
So, you had a four-two vote in favor of denying the zoning change.
We'll second guess.
Yeah, so, it is, so I'll say this, in the last several years, it has not been the habit of city council to second-guess our citizen-appointed boards, committees, and commissions. I can't speak for what the council's going to do, but I personally will, in, because I don't get a vote, I will...
So, let's let council hear this fully, if we could.
Oh, come on, I wanna poison the well.
Before we offer anything, part of the, and I mean this sincerely, part of the reason for our public hearing process is that residents who are favorable to public speaking, everything can go the way it is, and so, since we're not posted, unless...
He's also, he's also pointing out that we are in an open session, and the Texas Open Meeting Act does not allow us to discuss items that have not been posted, but if you'll see me after the meeting, I'll be glad to say what I was gonna say. Soon as we adjourn, I'll run my mouth.
You said October 23rd.
October 23rd, before city council.
Okay.
Indeed, yes, sir?
Do you ever drive that Goldwing down Old Wiederstein in your travels?
Absolutely, I drive, I write it down, Old Wiederstein in my travels, and, you know, it's, it actually gets way better when you get past where the Sibolo subdivision is, and you get back into Shirts. And part of the reason is all that use that comes from, but that's also related to commentary I might have on Wiederstein. Since you asked about Wiederstein, but you meant Old Wiederstein, listen, Sibolo came to us with a proposal for Wiederstein, and that was brought before the city council, the city council all nodded their heads and basically said to the acting city manager, yeah, we're good, if you can go and get that deal consummated, we're ready to move on it. And we haven't gotten anything back from our friends in Sibolo yet, I know they're taking a look at it, but we've, we, and not a lot of Shirts residents that drive on Wiederstein from Sibolo Valley Drive out to 35, but in a spirit of cooperation, city council said, we'll put up a million, and if Sibolo will put up some money, and the developer will put up some money, we'll prioritize that project to help get that done, and hopefully the Sibolo folks will come back and agree to pursue their proposal to us, and we can get that done. That'll be step one. The second thing is, as development begins to happen there, on that hard corner, not just Evo, and not just potentially what might be the amphitheater, but all those things that come around out in front, and the rest of the development, that will give us more mechanisms, and again, I can't get too deep into things that are not posted for, I know, but, more mechanisms with economic development, Economic Development Corporation, we may be able to accelerate having Old Wiederstein redone as well. Our eyes are on it, without a doubt, and no, it's not a lot of fun on the motorcycle. There's some spots over there off of, as you go toward Converse, that are not a lot of fun either. There was one that was about three feet wide, and three feet deep, and about two feet deep that I narrowly missed, it got fixed shortly thereafter.
Wow.
Well, you know, someone else hit it, and after the ambulance had gone out there, there was, at any rate. Anything else that we can try and address this evening?
Are we gonna have another meeting next weekend?
Yes, the plan is to do this again, and so, if you will, if you would like, you can send an email to Brenda Dennis, which is BDennis@shirts.com, or to me, if you wish, although you'll get a lot farther with Ms. Brenda on this particular meeting at mayor@shirts.com, but, Ms. Brenda?
I do have comment cards that, you know, may make suggestions for next time, that you might wanna hear about. I will tell you, when you call the City of Shirts, we are very responsive to you, we work for you, we want to, we want to open these, that's what we had, we had this communication to open up. Let us hear from you, fill us comment card out, if you would, give us ideas of what you wanna hear about, and maybe problems they didn't have time to discuss tonight. I appreciate everybody being there, thank you so much.
Yeah, and if you would like to do this more often than semiannually, if you wanna do it quarterly, then I'm all for it. I think it's a great, having gone through this for the last couple of hours, I think this is absolutely invaluable. Love it. Kudos to Mr. Edwards for coming up with the idea.
Thank you to Brenda for doing all that.
And Brenda, absolutely, indeed. Yes, sir?
I have one final comment.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to share, that I tell everybody, I've only been a resident of Shirts out here for seven, eight years. I've been in this part of the country my whole life, I actually served six years, mayor of the city.
Oh, you poor soul. Your honor, it's a pleasure to meet you. Is that why you have the great?
Most of it, yeah. But, I wanna say, I've watched Shirts grow from a small, little sleepy town, to what I consider a fairly good-sized city now, and my hats go off to this city for keeping up with the growth, and providing the services that we have in this city, because that's not an easy task, because you take, Shirts in the last 20 years has basically exploded in growth.
It has, I moved here 20 years ago.
And it's, and they have done a phenomenal job of keeping up with that growth, and I just wanna say my hats are off to this city.
On behalf of all the staff who do the majority of the work, and the city council, and the council members that have come before, and the previous mayors, thank you. We have been very blessed, this current council, and me, to have folks that have come before us, staff and electeds as well, since 1958, that have made extraordinarily fantastic decisions on behalf of all of us, and we are the beneficiaries of it, so...
I worked with Al Baldwin pretty closely.
Mayor Baldwin, and Mayor Sawyer before him, Mayor Stabackin that served only two years from 80 to 82, who got both sides of 35 annexed into the City of Shirts during his tenure, and said, I got that done, I'm outta here. Mayor Bueker, prior to that, who learned how to speak German as a prisoner of war, and then went and met with the farmers on the other side of 35, spoke to them in German, convinced them to become part of the City of Shirts, not part of the City of San Antonio, to Judge Richard, to our first mayor that served two years. Every one of them has made amazing contributions with the staff and with their councils, so we stand on the shoulders of giants, but thank you, on all their behalf.
Absolutely. One last question for Ms. Brenda, is there any way that we can get a list on these close DMCs and neighborhoods and stuff? As a friend of HOA, I'd like to have other...
I can provide a list, now, as far as personal information, there's some that have to ask me not to, but I can provide you a list of the HOAs with the name of the HOA president.
Okay.
And then what I can do, if you wanna reach out to one of those, call me, I'll call them, make sure it's okay. That way, we protect that information, okay?
Tony's name's in the bathroom.
Is that right?
Yeah.
But we're a brand-new HOA, so we love getting good help from you guys.
I think it's important that we have other people in our, you know, that we can reach out to.
Absolutely.
That, for many reasons, I mean, not only to be able to share ideas, but to be able to talk about our problems within our communities, and see if others are having that, and we can share what we've done to have come to, to, yeah, it's nice to know we're not alone. Yeah, absolutely. But if somebody's been able to resolve those issues, but also, you know, we all have landscapes, we all, we, some of us have pools, some of us have different services that we use, and, you know, we're not happy with somebody, hey, can I, I'm gonna call a few of the neighbors and see who they're using, if they're happy, or if they can give